Allegiance, if we can have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Moving along to Communications, 4.01, Public Comments on Agenda Items. No one signed up for Agenda Items, thank you. We're going to waive the reading until the end. 4.02, Communications, Announcements Received by the Board of Education. Yeah, if you just bear with me one second. I do have a quick announcement. I'd just like to thank the Rotary Club again for the Students of the Month. Congratulations to Marcus DeGallo from RCK, Verna Gorman from Meyer Corners, and Mason Seymour from Evans, and Omit Kawaskam from Sheaf Road, and all the parents and staff that supported these students. Congratulations to the John Jay Senior Olympics, Science Olympics. They placed sixth in New York State, and they won eight medals. So I'd like to send out a congratulations to those students. I'd also like to just bring everybody up to date with the DC Boses. I'd like to congratulate Jody DeLuca. She's been appointed our new District Superintendent as of the March meeting, March 14th meeting. And we have a new interim Deputy Superintendent that was appointed as an interim, Louis Riolo Jr. So I'd like to welcome Louis to the team. And he comes from Putnam Northwest, just the Boses. And he's going to be with us as an interim until we search for a full-time Deputy Superintendent. Thank you. Marie Johnson, you have something.
Yes, I'd like to say since the last meeting, several of us had the great honor, I'm sure we'll be coming forward, for going to the State of the County address that was held at John Jay High School. And I want to thank firstly, Principal Kedzalawa and his entire team for their getting the building ready. I also want to say thank you to Eva Dvorak, who sings our national anthem so beautifully and brings chills to my heart every single time I hear that young woman sing. Also Sophia Puglia, uh, Puglia, I'm sorry, who was honored with introducing Sue Serino. And she was so beautiful, and she did such an amazing job honoring Women for Women's History Month. And an amazing performance by our Royce Ketchum Step Team, which I do have video archive of our superintendent with the Step Team. Someday I'll release that for everybody. Oh, yes. I also was able to attend Pi Day at Van Wyk Junior High School with Dr. Miller and Mr. Lumia, I'm sure will be expounding on that. WAP Jr.'s Beetlejuice, outstanding. And we need to get that backdrop permanently to be able to do the scenery in the back. We're going to have to figure that out, how we're going to do that. The Royce Ketchum Spanish Honor Society, where several of us went. Again, thank you, Mr. Lumia, for stepping up to be able to give a speech that day to our students. That was very, very well planned. Thank you. John Jay Career Fair, there was so many people, I believe it was 115 vendors. Mr. Morgan was also there on behalf of his college, and it was great to see everybody. We had International Night also, the same night at Van Wyk, which was great. A lot of brilliant talent, and then food afterwards. So everybody, don't forget, this weekend is Curtains at John Jay. So make sure you get out to see that performance. And also, spring sports are starting. And just so we know, I wore Royce Ketchum's racing gear a few weeks ago, and I finally got my John Jay in. So I am also honoring John Jay's racing team for winner's circle. It's one of the best projects that I love going to see and watch is both of those teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Cullen.
In addition to all these events, I would like to mention Ms. Rappaport's program for sixth graders in writing novels at Myers Corners. Nine students got up and read the first chapters of their novels. Each of them, those were about four or five minutes long. And it was, if you had told me that some of them were commercial ones that sell frequently, I would have believed them because they were so good. And we hope to see great things from those students in the future. Hopefully, they will finish their novels and go on to be fine singless students in seventh and eighth grade.
Thank you, Trustee Cullen. Anyone else? Mr. Lumia.
I sincerely hope that program that Ms. Rappaport has continues. It was exceptional. The kids were really, really, really good. They were able to write a part of a first chapter of their novel, which I, so I hope it continues. Last week, I attended a spring concert at John Jay with sixth graders from Fishkill Plains, Gahead, Brinkenhof, as well as seventh and eighth graders from Van Wyk Junior High School, as well as high school performed. The students were excellent. I want to recognize an eighth grader by the name of Leon Ogino, who was asked to play in Carnegie Hall. Incredible. Can you imagine an eighth grader playing at Carnegie Hall? When I heard that, I was shocked. It was incredible. I want to thank the teachers for all they do for our students. As my neighbor here stated regarding, what do you call it, the Pi Day. Dr. Miller is a program where there are six, there are six schools, there are five schools, elementary school, they're involved, the kids are involved. The parents bring them in in the morning, probably two scarts. I want to congratulate all the students from Oak Grove, who were able to establish the Guinness World Record multiplying 96 by 96 digit. A 48 by 48, 12 by 12, and 24 by 24. The answer to 96 to 96 require 191 digits. I can't, I can't conceive of me even repeating those 191 digits while making a mistake. Dr. Miller is exceptional. And I sincerely hope that program continues long after I'm gone. And I hope they can, it goes on to not only five schools, but additional schools. So I want to thank Dr. Miller. And again, that I already mentioned, what Mrs. Cullen already stated. And with that, that's it. John Morgan.
Thank you, Trustee Lumia. Trustee Morgan.
Thank you, President McFarland. In connection with the Science Olympiad and the math achievement and the writing achievement, that all ties into why we had so many vendors at John Jay. And similarly, to the College and Career Fair at Ketchum. Word is out, that's, I don't know how often JetBlue comes and recruits at high schools. JetBlue was there, they sent a pilot in uniform to man their booth. The FBI sent two people to man a booth. So it is the outstanding achievement of our students that then brings about interest in attracting those students to businesses and governmental agencies. And I think that that's a reflection of the work that the faculty does and the support that the students receive at home to excel in the classroom. And congratulations to Mrs. Keating in particular for organizing the College and Career Fair. But its success, I think, is a reflection on the entire district.
Thank you, Trustee Morgan. Anyone else?
I have a, I would like to congratulate students from the district that participated in the United States Track and Field. They participated unattached to the school sports, but they had one student from WAP Jr., he took second place in the high jump and sixth place in the hurdle. You have a RCK student that was third place in the 1500 meter run. And a group of young men who ran in the yeah, four by, four by 100. So congratulations to those students. And with spring season to come, you will see more from them and get their names and know they have done.
Thank you, Trustee Otoms. Anyone else? Okay, moving around along to 4.03, Committee Reports. Capital Improvement is chaired by Eddie Slowshower.
We had our meeting on March 5th, Trustee Capellari, Trustee Johnson and myself, as well as Board President McFarland. Just some quick updates, again, not to be too repetitive, but I guess I will be. We will be testing the new chiller and air conditioning system at Fishkill Plains Elementary, hopefully within the next couple of weeks as the weather gets a little bit warmer. I think we're looking at at least a 60, 65 degree day to test the system. Again, kitchen hood work will all be done during the summer. We also, oop, sorry. Work continues on the bus garage here at Wappingers Junior High. Hopefully, we'll have that project completed by the summertime as well. We've begun some work that we wanted to start last year. If everyone remembers, we did not get approval from SED in time to begin work on Van Wyk. Subsequently, that was approved. So we're looking to jumpstart the summer work at Van Wyk. So we do have some asbestos removal going on in the auditorium to repair the floors. We're continuing to do some construction documents at John Jay for the press box. Also, we are still, weather permitting, again, hopefully the weather will be warm to finalize and finish up our new athletic sound systems at both of the high schools on the football fields. Our traffic study for Myers Corner, I believe, is, should be in this week. The Capitol Committee will be reviewing it and then sharing that information with the full board tentatively at our next board meeting. And that's pretty much it. Our next meeting will be the first Wednesday in April, which I believe is April 2nd, April 3rd, I'm sorry. Wednesday, April 3rd, 9:30 at the RCK Annex. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Slowshower. Our Wellness Chairperson is not with us this evening, so we'll do policy. And our Chair is Trustee Cullen.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met on March 6th with myself, Board members, Mr. McFarland, Ms. Miggitts in present, and also Assistant Superintendent Darren Lohkema and District Clerk Alberta Pedro. They, at this time, we approved policies, which you'll see for second reading today, on choosing an ex officio student member of the Board and on relating to extreme heat conditions and display of the flag. Because we have completed our three-year review and have addressed all the NISBA policy updates, and no issue have been raised except one minor one. We are not going to meet in April or May to allow our District Clerk to do the vast amount of work related to the elections. But we will meet the first Wednesday in June.
Thank you, Trustee Cullen. Now we have DCSBA, Board Representative Peggy Cullen again.
The Duchess County School Boards Association met by Zoom on March 6th, and Mr. McFarland and myself were present. Mr. McFar, is that better? Okay. Mr. McFarland and myself were present. We met by Zoom. The Boses candidates introduced themselves. And the main point of the meeting was to, we discussed cell phone policies at the different school districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cullen. Superintendent's Report, 5.01.
Thank you, President McFarland, members of the Board of Education and the Wappingers Central School District Learning Community. As you've heard from our Board members, they have highlighted some of the important items and experiences that we provide for our students outside of the classroom. We believe that that is just as important as the opportunities that we provide them inside the classroom. And as you've heard, when we provide our students with an opportunity to experience success, it is infectious to the point where I am very pleased to hear a good 10 minutes every board meeting of congratulations on all of the fine accomplishments of our students and of our staff. And also, the commitment that our community continues to show, as you mentioned, Mr. Morgan, and partner in with our schools. We are fully committed to providing success for all of our students. This will continue. I also want to indicate that I had an opportunity yesterday to attend a reception for James Warriors, which that program occurs in three of our schools. It addresses student mental health, which I believe we all understand is something that we continue to combat. And I would like to thank James Warriors and their staff for not only the difference that they're making in Wappingers by speaking with our students and families, but the, the difference that they are making throughout New York State. So I want to thank Mrs. Thomas for all of her efforts. I see Principal Thompson is back there. I saw him yesterday at the event. I know Principal Seip participates, as well as Principal Di Stefano. And again, this is another way in which we reach out to our community as a team to be part of the solution. And again, that is something that will continue because we believe that it's important. And with that, I want to thank James Warriors, and I want to thank our Board members for continuing to celebrate the many positive things that are going on in this school district. And we need to always be reminded of that when we go to these events. So when we have conversations as to what is important, what isn't important, it's all important. It's all of our students, and they all deserve the same opportunities and activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Bonk. 5.02, DC Boses Budget Presentation by Matt Metzer.
By the way, Mr. Metzer, I'd like to thank you for being here this evening. We certainly enjoy our partnership with Duchess Boses, especially in the areas of career and technical education. I'd also like to congratulate the new District Superintendent, Dr. Jody DeLucia, as well as new Interim Superintendent, Mr. Louis Riolo. So, Mr. Metzer, we'd like to thank you and welcome you here this evening. Thank you.
Do you have a working mic?
I believe so. So, good evening, Superintendent Bonk and members of the Wappinger Board of Education. I'm the school business official from Duchess Boses, Matt Metzer. I'm really here to speak in summary about our administrative budget that you'll be voting on. Also, you know, and kind of in a summary, and then talk about some of the exciting things that are happening at Duchess Boses. We're very thrilled to have, you know, the recent appointment of Dr. Jody DeLucia Superintendent. She would normally be present with me, but tonight she's up in Albany. And that's part of her duties now, is really representing Duchess County at the, at the state level. So this is our current Board of Trustees. You might recognize a familiar face up there. This April, we have three spots up for election. There's two incumbents and one vacant spot. The highest two vote-getters will be elected to a three-year term, and the third will be elected for a two-year term. This election will take place on Tuesday, April 22nd, at each of the components boards. Just to kind of highlight some of the timelines we have here. In January, our service requests went out to the district that really encompasses most of the programs and services that we do. And that goes to the business officials, and then they start gathering the information for what they want to participate for in the next school year. We're going to ask that those service requests come back from the school districts on April 4th. And on April 22nd, that's when we're going to vote on this administrative budget that I'm speaking to tonight. It's important to remember that this is the one budget that during the year we really can increase. It's, it's voted on by the, it's contributed by the 13 component districts, and it's voted on by them solely. So it's important that we get that right. And then really, on June 11th, Boses will improve our, approve our entire budget, which will not only include the administrative piece, but also all the programs and services that other districts have signed up for. We do, do know that they'll change during the year based on participation in the programs, but we have to start somewhere, and that's what we do. So just a few assumptions here as we move into the 25, 26 school year. You know, retiree health insurance continues to be the, you know, the really, the largest burden on this budget. As I've mentioned in past years, health insurance is covered by specific programs while teachers are active. But once they retire, it all comes into this administrative budget. And that's because, you know, certain programs may end. But, you know, we have a commitment to pay their insurance after they retire. We try and offset where we can some of the administrative budget with administration fees from non-component districts. So as I mentioned, the 13 districts are responsible for funding the administrative budget. But we do services and other programs for school districts outside of our county. So when we, when we provide a service, then what we do is we, we actually charge a higher rate, and we try and bring some of that admin fee in to help offset. It seems fair to me. It doesn't seem that, like, you know, the 13 districts should have all the burden on this. We're going to continue to really to focus on facilities and maintenance, and I'll talk about that a little bit as we, as we move on. So really, here's the, the proposed budget for 25, 26. We can see that we have a total budget of just under $7 million, 6.8. As I mentioned, the majority of it is the retiree health insurance, which is at $5 million approximately. That's a 7% increase from last year. You know, we're, Boses, as, as Wappingers, is a member of the Duchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium. I know a lot of discussion, you know, the, the, I think the biggest increase really is coming as a result of prescription drugs in the last year. And then when we look at the non-administrative, or non-retire administrative piece, that's really the covers of superintendent salary, the board clerk, our Board of Trustees, parts of the business office. We're actually down just about 2% in that. Where we can, we try and move full-time equivalents, which are basically salaries, when, when we can move those salaries out of the administrative budget, we can get them into some programs where we think it's defendable. We try and do that to the best of our ability. So we have a, really a total budget that's up just about 4.5%. And when we look at what's going to fund that, certainly the components charge, the 13 districts is the lion's share. We need to collect $6.3 million from the districts this year for that. It's up just under 8%. The other revenue is really, interest earnings is the, is the majority of that. And we kind of project that they're going to go down in the next school year. So we've only budgeted for $505,000 there. When we look at Wappingers for next year, 25, 26, a very substantial increase of 10.4%, up about $172,000, greater than the, the budget that we propose. This is really a result of our WADA, which is how we divide the components' share of this budget. I've mentioned this in past years as well. I mean, Wappingers very easily is 30% of the, you know, Duchess County. Last year, the total our WADA for the county was 37, 362. It's actually gone up to 37, 560. Wappingers has gone up, I think 294 was the number I had written down. So what that means is that a lot of the, a lot of the districts have actually decreased. So as a result of that, you're going to, you're going to pick up a larger share of the, of the cost of this. I'd like to remind everybody, what, our WADA is really a state aid number. It's based on enrollment. It's important to remember that the 7th through 12th graders are actually computed at 1.25%. So if you have basically four high scores, it really comes out to five. So it's not going to match, you know, if you're trying to match that to it, to your enrollment for your district, you're not going to be able to match that up. I'd like to, at this evening too, is to talk about our capital rental funding as well. So each year, we get a similar contribution from our districts. We're going to keep that at $1 million, which is consistent with last year. And we still have a few rentals in our, in some of the school districts. We have rental agreements with Spack and Kill and Redhook, and we're going to, we're going to reduce that to $60,000. So in total, down $5,000, but once again, due to the increased share by Wappingers for our WADA, an increase here of just over $5,000. This is kind of just highlights your book of business with Duchess Boses for the 23, 24 school year. So, and this includes maybe cross contracts that you might have with another Boses, Ulster Boses or Putnam Northern Westchester. But it was really $17 million book of business. The surplus return on that was $2.4 million, and it generated $3.1 million in Boses aid. The aid ratio at Boses is approximately 55%. So really, a return of investment of about 31%. It doesn't include excess cost aid, which is aid that's, that's driven on special ed courses and the like. Just kind of like to highlight your participation with us at, at Boses. You have 57 in special and alternative ed. So 34 are located at our, our Soul Point Center. Nine are in our alternative high school, and four are actually in districts. So that could either be located at Spack and Kill or Redhook, as I previously mentioned. And there's 105 students participating in our CTI program. Some of the larger ones are AutoTech, Electric Trades, Cosmetology, and Culinary Institute. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty exciting time at Boses, I think. We've really come out of the pandemic pretty strong. I think the, certainly the, the CTI enrollment is up substantially. Our alternative high school, I think three years ago was about 75 students. We're up to about 150 in that, that program now. And special ed is as well, high enrollment, certainly children coming out of the pandemic, you know, have, have some needs, and we're, and we're addressing those. We're really focusing on space utilization. We've, we've run out of space ironically very quickly after our new build, you know, with the enrollment and the programs that we're running. And the focus is really to try and, and create a self and welcoming and respectable school culture. That's sometimes difficult. We want to make sure that they're safe and secure, but we also, also want them to be, feel welcome when they're, when they're coming to our facilities. So I know Jody's going to continue to be effective and communicate and collaborate between the key stakeholders. I know that's a, you know, part of her, part of her plan. And to really, what we'd really like to see is really the CTI really become a state-of-the-art facility for learning, really to kind of increase the offerings there and increase some of the equipment and things that the, that the children are using. We're thankful to have our PTEC program that's being hosted here at Royce Ketchum. I think they have, there's 11 Wappinger students that are, they're finishing up, I think, their first year in that, so. Be happy to take any questions. I will be repeating this performance again, April 9th, at our Board of Trustees meeting, and that's kind of our formal budget meeting. And then, like I said, it would go out to vote for you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Monta?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Manta? Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mesker. Thank you for, for going through this, for the, for the Board of Education and the Wapingers community. When you talked about your key budget assumptions, the very first one was consistent enrollment in CTI and special slash alternative education programs. But you began with health insurance and went down. I was hoping, given our large support of CTI and sending students to that, if you could talk about how that impacts the budget, please.
Yeah, you know, I think, I had mentioned before about the increase in enrollment, and I think it's important for us to, I think what would really help us absorb some of this administrative budget, if we can find some type of niche, a niche service that not just our 13 component districts are coming to us for, but maybe, you know, from outside, Ulster, Putnam Counties. And then as I mentioned, you know, we, we have an administrative fee that we charge in that. So the cost of Wapingers might be $25,000, but if it's a non-component, we would, we would charge 27,000, just as an example, a little uptick on it. And I think that money coming in would be able to, you know, absorb some, it's kind of help the admin budget the best we can. So just like I said though, I think it's just really the key and an exciting time up there, it really is. I mean, the numbers, I think, you know, probably 2019, probably 600 enrolled in CTI. I think now we're approaching 900. I know there's waiting lists for some of the classes that the, you know, that the, that the students want to enroll in. So.
Is having non-component school districts send students to Duchess BOSI's a matter of adding new programs or is the matter of, of marketing and making people aware of what Duchess BOSI's is doing outside of the 13 component districts?
Yeah, I think it's a little combination. I mean, there's certain times with special ed where we might have a program that really nicely fits a student that's outside the county, so they'll be willing to come to us for that. But you know, it may also be, you know, a state-of-the-art, maybe CTI program that we could develop that maybe some of the other BOSI's aren't, aren't really offering. I think those are something, and it, and it may be something that's not even related to specifically to, you know, to students, but it might be a program that we do perhaps for the business office or for maybe, you know, one of the departments in the school district that, that there might be an opportunity there for.
No, no pressure, but just to, to give the new superintendent a, a 365-day running start, maybe, maybe she could be with us next year and talk about her, her vision for a more specific example. Thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you, Trustee Morgan. Trustee Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Metz, Metzer. Just to clarify for some of the, the people out there so that they understand, this is the administrative budget. So this is not, those students that we talked about, the 39 special ed and the 105 CTI, we do actually have a larger BOSI's budget because we pay per student for those as well, correct?
That's correct. This is very specific to the, you know, the board clerk, the superintendent, the board of trustees, the business office. And it's, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's, it's one that we cannot, we cannot increase this or decrease it during the year.
Right.
If we run a special ed coaster and we have, you know, it starts out with 15 students, but all of a sudden our enrollment goes up to 20, we're going to, we can increase our budget in total, but this one, this one we cannot.
Right. I just wanted to clarify because I know some people look at our budget and say, well, it says BOSI's on there and there's a much bigger number than the, than, than the 1.8 that is listed on here. This is just one portion of our BOSI's. We still also have to participate when it comes to the students for the CTI we pay per student. So the enrollment could change differently as that goes as well. I just wanted to point that out for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. I'd like to get the, Trustee Odoms?
Yeah, thank you for sharing the, the opportunities, academic opportunities. And I don't know if that discussion, I know you were talking about the administrative funding, but when you look, I don't know if that's the, if that's what you was implying, but even when you look at the Wapingers compared to the next school, is the, the year-to-date changes double the amount? So I, I mean, I know you have an explanation for it, but can you expand, can you expand on that? Because if I'm just looking at this and I'm seeing 10.4%, and then I see another for capital and rent to, it just doesn't, it just doesn't move the right way.
Right. So this, by state law, we're going to determine your share of the administrative budget by a state aid figure called our WADA, resident weighted average daily attendance. And I think the premise was they use this number, so it's non-arbitrary. BOSI's could not be accused of maybe lowering the amount they charged from Arlington as opposed to Wapingers. It's a consistent number in that it's, 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 it's produced by the state, which is inputted from all the districts when you do their state aid claims, and that's what they determine the share is. So when we look at this year, it's really just that Wapingers is going up substantially. They've increased by 294. You can see that most of the districts are in the red and have gone down. So when we take that, when we take that pie each year and we have to cut it up, you have a larger share of it this year. Believe last year you were probably about 28 and a half percent, and this year you're over 29% if I were to do the math.
Thank you, thank you, President McFarland. So my question is also on our WADA. And, and I don't know if you're able to totally answer this question, but as I look here, our WADA went up by 1.75%.
Yep.
And I believe there's only one other district, oh, I'm sorry, two other districts whose our WADA went up more than ours. And when I take a look at the our WADA, they're, they're similar to our enrollment numbers. Because according to 24, 25, we're at 10, 599, 25, 26, we're at an increase of 294. So is that at all related to enrollment, growing enrollment? Is, or, or is that a specific formula that the state determines? And if it is, what did they determine that formula based on?
Yeah, I think.
And you may not be able to answer.
It could be a combination of both. So I, I mentioned something before that's important. Your seven, grade seven through 12 are at a 1.25. So when you enter, when you enter your attendance, daily attendance for high school, your seven through 12s are at a 1.25. So as I said, every four kids turns into five, where your K through six is all straight up, you know, what it is. So it may be, maybe that your population maybe is a little bit older. You have more people in the high school than maybe the elementary schools as compared to some of the other districts. It may be just that your enrollment's up. You know, there's kind of, I think it's a difficult thing to kind of drill into here and to compare it to the rest of the county, but it's probably a little combination of both. And I think the our WADA, this large our WADA is going to help you on another state aid calculation somewhere else.
Thank you.
That may generate more.
Thanks for the clarification, man. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, our time is up.
I'm out.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate it.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you for all your time. So we're going to be moving to 6.01 consent agenda. Anybody going to remove anything from the consent agenda? Mr. Trustee Morgan?
I would like to remove from the consent agenda, agenda item 6.03, item number 10.
So moved?
Resolve.
We getting a motion for that?
No.
No? Okay.
Resolve, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated, 6.02, 6.03, less item 10, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, 6.10, 6.11, 6.12, 6.13, and 6.14.
Trustee Kellin, second by Mr. Lumia. All in favor? I see everybody. No opposed? Thank you. So moved.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda item as stated, 6.03, item 10.
Motion? So moved. Second by Marie. All in favor?
President McFarland, if I could just note that I asked this item to be pulled because I will be abstaining. I fully support the candidacy of my niece to become a substitute teacher in the district, but I have a conflict of interest and therefore I will abstain. Best of luck, Mary Beth.
Congratulations, Mr. Morgan. Thank you very much for letting us know about that. And if we can let the superintendent announce. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote on it. So motion? We got a motion? All in favor? John is abstaining. Mr. Morgan is abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you, President McFarland. We have an individual sitting out in the audience tonight that I would like to stand. It's Mr. Derek Frost. Mr. Frost, could you please stand? Congratulations and welcome to your new appointment. Mr. Frost will, can you hear me? Mr. Frost will be one of the assistant principals at John J. High School. We welcome him from the Pine Bush Central School District. You're a great fit. We know you're going to do a great job, so we welcome you and your family to Wapingers.
Okay, moving on to new business, 7.01 approval to attend Chamber of Commerce 40 Under 40 Award Ceremony.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following board members to attend the Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce 40 Under 40 Mover and Shaker Awards to honor WCSD employees Brianna Crane and Zachary Utter on Thursday, May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Living Water Theater located at 260 Mill Street, the Kipsey, New York at a cost of $55 registration fee.
Do we have a motion?
Who wants to go?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you gave me the members. Any members want to attend this event? Trustee Morgan? Anyone else? I see no one else. Okay, motion? Motion? Keith Odoms? Okay, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, you want to discuss it?
So would this be 55 hours per person or would this be?
Per person.
Per person. Can we not have the district pick it up? And whichever board member attends, pay it pocket?
Well, normally if we were honoring district employees, usually we have a budget item in our board budget to attend the ceremonies for, you know, specific district employees that are, are participating. We normally cover it. So we do budget a few dollars. So I think we should be okay. Correct, Ms. Pedro? We have it budgeted.
Anyone else? So we had a motion. We seconded. All in favor? Aye. 7.02 approval of legal notice for May 2025 budget vote and board member election.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the legal notice for the May 20th, 2025 budget vote and board member election as stated.
Motion? Trustee Kellin, second by Mr. Lumia. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. 7.03 approval of new charter club, new club charter Dungeons and Dragons Club at Van Wick Junior High School.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the new club charter for the Dungeons and Dragons Club at Van Wick Junior High School as submitted.
Motion? Marie Johnson, second by Virgil Capillari. Discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. 7.04 approval of extra class activity funds, financial statements, 630, 2024, and cap.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the annual extra classroom activity funds, financial statements from Bonadino and Company LLP for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and the corrective action plan as recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Business Development to the Superintendent of Schools as stated.
Motion? Marie Johnson, second by Mr. Lumia. Discussion? All in favor? Mr. Morgan, you have a discussion?
I just wanted to point out that Assistant Superintendent Dainty worked diligently and comprehensively to put together the corrective action plan. I want to recognize those efforts.
Thank you, sir. All right. So all in favor? 7.05 approval of new mark, Wap Junior High School Track and Field.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the new Wapingers Junior High School Track and Field logo, official marks created in-house by Coach Jeremy Atkins as stated in the attached Use of District School Marks Consent Form. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby waive the first reading and adopts the revision to exhibit 5260-E.1 Official Marks effective March 25th, 2025 to add the new image for the Wapingers Track and Field as requested by Principal Thompson and Athletic Director Jasmine.
Motion? Marie Johnson, second by Trustee Kellin. Discussion?
I just want to say that I really do like this new mark that is out, and I can't wait to see some of the gear, so make sure we get the link for that, too.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson, for that information. Motion? Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. 7.06, second reading and adoption of policies.
Resolve that the Board of Education of the Wapingers Central School District hereby approves the second reading of and adopts the following policies based upon the first reading by the board and the recommendation of the policy committee as stated.
Motion? Trustee Kellin, second by Mr. Capillara. Discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. 7.07 approval of donations.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby accept the following donations as
Motion? Marie Johnson, second by Eddie Slowshower. Any discussion? Yes, Ed?
First, I would like to express my gratitude and I believe the gratitude of everybody sitting up here, as well as everyone in this district, to Trustee Capillari for the donation and his involvement in the donation of the POW MIA, MIA flags for each of our, each of our schools to go up on flagpoles in honor and memory of those who have served and for those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. So thank you, sir, for not only your service, but for spearheading this campaign. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Slowshower and board, and especially the students, the district, the community. Wapingers Schools continues to set the standard with honoring our past military service, which has been absolutely vital to this country. And all I can tell you is that in recent months, a number of other districts have reached out asking about how to generate that enthusiasm. None of this is possible without the support and especially those days. And another special thank you to Principal David Sype and Principal David Kazalawa because both events were nothing short of outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you again for that information. Motion? Second. Peggy. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Request for any additional agenda items? 8.01. Any request for additional items? I see no requests. 9.01 comments from the public. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to listen to public comments. Although the state law does not require us to hold public comment periods, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a debate or dialogue. Please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have time to significant, significant time to process and research any issues if need be. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of a public comment forum, which may be obtained online or at the desk of the district clerk. We will have the proper staff member get back to you as appropriate. As also, I want to point out that under the state federal privacy law, we are unable to address any comments and questions about specific students, schools, or personnel. We would ask you to go through the appropriate administration channels. A total of 30 minutes at the end, at the end of the beginning of each board meeting is set aside to allow for public comments on agenda items only. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited only to the items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting are asked to provide their name and a specific agenda item about which they wish to speak. A sign up sheet is located on the desk with the district clerk. Individual comments on agenda items is limited to three minutes and are welcome. If you wish to address items related to our school district that are not on tonight's agenda, another comment period is provided at the end of the meeting for that purpose. A second sign up sheet is available for non-agenda, agenda items in the event of a civil disability and respect for different points of views, clapping, booing, or any disturbance during the disruption during this either public comment period is not permitted. At this time, comments related to agenda items or public comments are welcome. So my first sign up was Mark Fleischer?
Flyshower.
Flyshower? Mr. Flyshower, he's from Reinbeck.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Mark Flyshower. I'm a trustee on the Reinbeck School Board and I'm a candidate for Duchess Bosse's Board. I just wanted to take a few minutes or three minutes to introduce myself so that you have, you can match my face to the name that is on the ballot later on in April when you vote for the Duchess Bosse's Board. I am completing my 19th year of service in, as a trustee on the Reinbeck Board. I've served as president and vice president of the Reinbeck Board. Served on many of the various committees. By the way, I've already sent you a letter. So you've got all my bio information. I represent Reinbeck at the Duchess County School Board Association and I have served as president and vice president of that organization as well. I'm a great believer in collaboration, of which Bosse is a prime example. I believe in the importance of programs for students who may not be college bound such as C T I. And I feel there's a great need for cybersecurity and education and that Bosse's can be a leader in cybersecurity services, which is one of those services that Mr. Metzger may, mentioned earlier that could be sold to other districts. So I hope you will consider voting for me for the Duchess Board, Duchess Bosse's Board when the vote comes up later on in April. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Emma Maradas?
Good evening and thank you so much for having me. My name is Emma and I am currently a senior at John J. And I'm also the president and founder of the John J. Amnesty Club. So today I'm here with my fellow officers who are right in the audience there to discuss the cancellation of our immigrant awareness event earlier on in March. So to give you a little bit of background, this event was part of National Week of Student Action, which is essentially a nationwide week of mobilization for all amnesty student groups to take action on one amnesty campaign. So this event would have included multiple guest speakers who would have spoke about their experience with immigrating to the United States and some of the challenges that they encountered once they got here. And we had guest speakers who were John J. Teachers and also relatives of current John J. Students. I do want to stress that this event was entirely voluntary. Students did have the opportunity to sit out if they were uncomfortable with the topic of conversation. So we did have that option for them. But unfortunately, this event was still canceled the day before it was supposed to occur. So I do want to start with saying that amnesty is a political and nonpartisan organization and anything that our club does follows that principle as an extension of that. So this immigrant awareness event was entirely nonpartisan. Our guest speakers were sharing their personal experiences and not necessarily stressing a political ideology. Let's take history classes, for example. New York State mandates in their curriculum that certain things are taught to students, including anti-immigration policies and global classes. So that'll be your Chinese Exclusion Acts, your Emergency Quota X. And those things are widely recognized as anti-immigration and they're also an undeniable part of our history. But so are the experiences of more recent immigrants, such as the people who would have spoken at our events. They are undeniably part of our history, just as much as those policies were. And who are we to say that they can't share our stories with John J. Students and with other students in the districts when we're already learning about these topics in our history classes? So overall, when we heard that the event was canceled, myself and other club members, we were very disappointed. We were very upset. And we almost felt as if we were being silenced because we put so much work and effort into making this event a success. And it was canceled, I feel, without much conversation between us as amnesty members and the district. So going forward, I would really like to establish that connection between us and the district and talking more about what exactly we can do to make our events more agreeable to the student population and have less issues going forward where we can still get our message out and having a meaningful impact. As somebody who is very, very involved in extracurriculars at John J., I am very passionate about this topic and I really want to be able to talk about these issues openly. So I am urging you to amend the policy about talking about controversial, controversial issues, just to include club activities in there because I founded John J. Amnesty to really have an impact on my school community and the wire community. And I, I truly think that we can do that with this amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniela Rosado?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Daniela Rosado and I'm a sophomore at John J. High School and the social media manager of Amnesty International. Thank you for having me. Today I would like to build upon what Emma said in terms of the district's response to the event amnesty wanted to hold and the importance of the topic that we were speaking on. Our intention was never to be biased or to, we wanted to aim and to provide a space of education and understanding for students. And we believe that opening discussions about immigrant rights are essential for a healthy community. Immigrant rights are not just a political issue, but a human issue affecting many individuals and families in our community. Every person deserves to have their rights recognized and protected regardless of their backgrounds. I know myself, I have an experience very similar to other people in my school. I'm a first gen student with immigrant parents that holds the situation very close to my heart. And each of us has a story intertwined with immigrant experience, whether it be our friends, neighbors, or family. These stories are vital to understanding the challenges and contributions of immigrants. And that is all our speakers would have liked to share with our students. We wanted to hold this event to further educate people and ourselves about the realities of immigrant lives and systemic challenges they face, including discrimination. So education can combat fear and misinformation, fostering understanding for our students and for ourselves. By learning about each other's experience, we can dispel myths and build a more inclusive community. This event would have allowed individuals to share personal stories, creating a safe space for dialogue and connection. Hearing first candid accounts can profoundly impact our perceptions and attitudes. So this is a topic we should all care about, especially our school district. Listening to others cultivates empathy, which is essential for a united, a united community and a unit, and united district. When we understand each other's struggles, we can work together toward common goals and educate. I urge the boards in the future, make sure that our students are heard and respected. Our school community should be a strong, welcoming environment for students to share and express relatable and educational topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, 10.01. Motion to adjourn?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby adjourn the March 24, 2025 Board of Education meeting. The time is now 8:34 PM.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Virgil Cavallari. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very